Michael actually just kind of addressed what I was going to say and I'm, I was just feeling that if, like he was saying, it's not accessible, it's not legal to view the piece, I was curious about the, the conversation around, should it be made safe and left to erode and all that? When, I just wonder about the accessibility maybe being kind of the more pertinent obstacle at this point, I don't know. So unless it's, unless the no trespassing signs come down or something's changing there, which it doesn't seem to be, I, yeah. Then I guess the plaque somewhere near the pier would be, I don't know, that's the more, make, you know, makes sense to me.
So if I can just speak on behalf of the PAC members, please, go ahead, Mary.
I'm just gonna weigh in and just comment, sort of a combination of a couple of different people's things. I am very impressed with the work. I think it's so interesting. I am concerned about the liability and the risk and the fact that it's inaccessible already. So the idea of putting a plaque up, which I think is really an interesting idea, I don't think that now is sort of the time. And I'm very much in agreement with Jeff when he talked about sort of the lifespan of a piece of public artwork. And I appreciated staff's information about the fact that at the time this was created, we weren't in a place where we were thinking about lifespan of things. But I do think that art is ever-changing and I agree with artists that it's fascinating to see how it is now and in retrospect to its entire lifespan. But I don't think that means it needs to stay. I do think that everything has a time and a place and that now is possibly, and it is in my perspective, the time for it to come to a conclusion. Although I just really do, you know, I appreciated having been there and so appreciate all of the artist's information and, and what he had to say with us today. But I think that my opinion is that we do remove it. So I just wanted to weigh in.
And if, if PAC is ready, I'll turn this over to Commissioner Baroff to see if he wants to, see if they're ready for a vote.
Yeah, okay. It's all right. Well, thank you, Michael. So from our PAC members, is there a motion in any way, shape or form about the issue at hand? No motion? I can make a motion if I'm privileged. So I motion that we affirm our February 8th decision to de-access the piece and reaffirm that this evening.
Is there a second?
I, I would like to also add the, sorry if I don't have this language, amend, amend your motion for staff to consider the possibility of a monument, be that a plaque or another monument that may be on or near the pier that would recognize the piece and convey its message.
If that's a friendly amendment, I accept it, you know, depending on where it's placed. Again, someplace that, if it was a place where people actually can see it and that's, I could appreciate that.
Quick question, after removal or so it's there to commemorate that it was there or to keep it and also have a, okay, thank you.
We have a second to the motion? Do we have another motion? Hello?
I'll second that.
Was that Jeff?
No, no, this needs to be seconded by a PAC member.
This is only.
Summer, by making an amendment, you're kind of, I think, seconding it.
I'm seconding it.
Okay, thank you. So we have a second. So a roll call of the PAC members on this motion to affirm the de-accession of the piece?
And if I, if I could just restate it back to you, what I think we heard is the motion to affirm the staff recommendations for deaccession and place some type of commemoration of the work in a publicly accessible area nearby.
I think my suggestion was to explore the possibilities for placing a plaque.
Okay. So let me read this back again. So motion to affirm the staff recommendations for deaccession and explore possibilities placing some type of commemorative plaque in a publicly accessible area nearby.
Correct.
Miles, are you ready?
Yeah. Who's calling, Roll there?
That is me. Michael Baroff?
Yes.
Francois Bar? Mary Patricia Doherty?
He's muted, I don't know.
Might need to be unmuted. Mary Patricia Doherty? Yes.
That's good. I abstain.
Marnie Gittleman? Did it, did anyone hear that?
Didn't hear.
Marnie?
Yes, with, with, yes, yes.
All right. Gwen Pugh?
Gwen had to leave.
Eva Sabermanian?
I think I abstain.
Summer Vaughn?
Yes.
So what is the vote, please?
The vote is three yeses, two abstentions. That's not enough to carry.
So, all right, all right.
There's an echo.
So where do we go from here? So it's not enough to affirm that we're at an impasse for this motion?
For that motion, it seems so. You would need to offer another motion to have the committee vote on it.
Or someone changed their vote.
Someone wants to reconsider or have a quick discussion? Or make another amendment that may support someone's abstention or otherwise? Not all at once now.
And if nothing changes on that vote, what happens? Does the commission move on? And do we need to have a recommendation from the committee? If it's, if it's still me?
We do. Yeah, we, we will vote on something that they have sent to us. If they haven't sent anything to us, we have, we're, you know, we're in.
Yeah, and I'm, we're in a bit of uncharted waters here and we're without Mike Myers, who has that institutional knowledge of how to handle all these arcane details. So I'm not sure if Nathan or Naomi, you have any sense of if the public art can't come to a recommendation, if the Arts Commission can act? I'm not sure, 100% sure that's the case. I think we need some kind of decision from the PAC and the Arts Commission can take the recommendation or not, but we can't have a hung jury here. So should we take another vote? Or do we want to add, does someone want to add an amendment to get them to either a yes or a no?
Shannon, this is, Nathan, do the, the policies require the PAC then to, to review this first? This, the Arts Commission cannot act without the PAC reviewing it first?
That's how it typically works.
But I'm wondering if that's in. My understanding is, is that we, we will consider something that has been sent to us, but that we, I mean, we could agendaize this same topic and, and have our own discussion. But, but as point of this joint meeting, we need something from PAC.
So again, on the floor, does anyone want to add anything? Ask a question for discussion to help us resolve this, make a different amendment, different motion? We're doing parliamentary procedure here, so. Here's a question. Is it appropriate to call, we have some PAC members who are not physically present. Is it appropriate to give them a phone call to ask them how they would vote?
I don't think so.
That's not.
Unless Gwen could join back, because he was here for the majority of it.
Okay, just asking, just asking procedural question. As I, so, hello?
How many more, how many more votes do we, do we need?
Is it one, Miles?
Let's see. You have eight people on your committee. You have now five in attendance?
So we would need all five?
It doesn't need to be unanimous, does it?
Well, the quorum, if eight, half is four, five is one plus.
Does it not have to be a majority of those present? Isn't that normal?
That's what I thought.
Correct.
Majority of those present.
Oh.
Yeah.
And we have three yeses.
So are we good?
So we care.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Yes.
Okay, so we're.
I was counting.
So we're good, pass the motion up to the Arts Commission, three yeses, two abstentions, is what I heard, correct?
Yeah, that's the tally.
Okay, well, so thank you very much. So handing it out to you, Michael.
Well, and, and so the story continues. So we, we have been given a recommendation from the Public Art Committee to reaffirm staff's recommendation to keep in place the decision made in February. So PAC has advised us to vote in the affirmative to basically not change any of the decisions already made for all of the reasons given. So we are open for discussion on this.
And the commemoration piece?
Absolutely, right. That's, that, right, absolutely.
Is it commemoration or the possibility of commemoration?
Okay, exploring the possibility, yeah.
And, and if it's explored and for some reason determined not to rate one, you would still, you as staff still have the authority to decorate the piece and not put a plaque in? Worst case scenario, I'm just checking, right? Because as stated.
Correct. But, you know, our, we love this piece, you know, like this is not a happy moment for any of us. And so I think finding some meaningful way to, you know, acknowledge this and help this live on virtually, or even if it's a plaque, you know, we're interested in doing.
Right.
Our staff has what they need out of the way that we're phrasing this so that you can move forward in the best way to your, to what you want to get done.
Sure. No, this is good. Thank you.
And as staff had previously mentioned and what Commissioner Baroff had voiced before, they've already been considering an enhancement of the already existing online presence. So that's, you know, they haven't made decisions yet, but that, but this is not a new conversation for them. So in a strange way, the, the plaque is a, an expansion of a, a process they've already been, you know, imagining.
That's right. Thank you for the reminder, Michael.
Discussion? If there's no discussion, are the commissioners comfortable with, with moving to a vote?
Sorry.
Okay, now I'm muted. Now we could talk.
Yeah, Mary, you're causing the echo. So we had to mute you.
You need to make a motion first, Michael, right?
That's correct. One of the commissioners would move to.
I'm sorry, just very quickly, I hate this technology right now. Mary Patricia has been the source of the echo and so she's been muted and has been unable to speak. So Mary Patricia, I'm gonna unmute you if you want to make a comment and then we can move to the vote. Does that work, Michael?
Sure.
Okay, I apologize. Okay, Mary Patricia, I'm.
I'm on a conventional phone, so I don't know why. This is a conventional phone. Why is it echoing?
We can hear you now, go ahead.
Please go ahead, please go ahead.
It's an, it's a conventional phone. It shouldn't really echo. The question came about while I was muted, so I couldn't respond. The question came about, what would we recommend? The artist, from his perspective, has done his job. He's highlighted his concept. The commission, from their perspective, and the PAC are looking out for the public's interest. But the middle ground is, I have never received the answer to how you would use the space. Would you put a concert all under the pier? Would you protect the piece as it deteriorated? Would you re-involve the Goethe Society or the public-private partnership that got it there to begin with? What would you do to make this work besides get rid of it and put up a plaque? Well, no one, with the exception of Summer, really was excited about the idea. And the artist, I believe, has left and Brueria, whom I worked with on this piece a little bit before I left, probably could give you some more history if you could just blew her in. So I abstained on the process because I felt that the voice of what could we do wasn't explored. If you're comfortable not exploring it, if you don't want the private funders who originally helped, to best of my knowledge, to do more, if you don't want the public art as it stands in a deteriorating state, like a snapshot with protection, or perhaps encasing it in concrete instead of water, since you've already got the sand, and making it into Manfred's concept of a concert hall where you would use the space, then, you know, you're perfectly within your rights to put something up to memorialize it and, you know, be done with it. If he did another piece, how would he do it? I'm just talking from the artistic perspective more than the legal for just a minute. Because I think it's important. So that's the reason behind my abstention, is that I thought we had a voice and a duty to protect what was there already and to explore some of the options that got it there.
Thank you. I, I don't know that, that anyone disagrees with, with the value of the work. I, I think the concerns that, that staff have brought us are safety, the, the cost factor of converting that to a concert hall, I would say, is not an option. Maybe it would be great to live in a world where the Cultural Affairs Department was so well-heeled that it could continue the commission of new work, the preservation of work that's still in a preservable state, and the restoration of work that's in a deteriorated state. I wish I lived in that world. I want to live in that world. I want to see the arts much more endowed. I want to see much more money in the city coffers for the arts, existing and yet to exist. The staff worked very hard and, and at least for me, presented a very compelling situation that none of us likes. I, I don't believe staff in any sense of the word enjoys the report they gave. We believe in this piece of work. But Jeff's notion of lifespan is, is not, you know, is, is not to be ignored. I've, I've made public art that has, I have allowed to deteriorate to nothing. I, I preserved it in its documentation. It lives on in, in a virtual way. I, I personally know this situation and I'm sure all the artists in this group do. My vote is not going to be an easy one. But I totally appreciate what you're saying and, and I certainly have argued that our role should be first and foremost about the art, about the aesthetic, about the, the, the celebration of the diversity of art. But there are points where if, if their numbers are right, these are, these are financial expenditures that are not options to this city in this timeframe. And I just, it's a very tough decision, but, but I, I'm, I'm, I feel, I feel what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna maybe, if I may, Michael, you know, reiterate what I've been saying and, and put it into artistic terms. I mean, back in the seventies, I was very interested and involved in conceptual art. And not to be too facetious, sometimes ideas transcend the pieces. Sometimes the ideas can, as you said, live and have a greater vitality than the actual physical objects, which basically represent it but are not it. And so I'm still, like I said, separating the issue with the physicality of the piece and believe by documenting it, the plaque, putting it online, creating whatever else could be appropriate in a manageable way, would most likely reach many, 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 many more people than going under the pier. In fact, probably worldwide potentially. I mean, people can access our website anywhere. So on some level, I mean, I'm this, I really differentiate the value of the, and the beauty of the ideas and let go of the physicality that initiated it, but evolved into something, in my opinion, much grander than it started out to be. So I, that's how I'm looking at this.
So, um, back to the Arts Commissioners for discussion and if anyone has a motion? Any discussion? Well, are we ready to put our names on a, on a ballot?
We need to make a motion first.
Yes, yeah, and if, if no.
I'll do it again. I mean, I make the same motion I made with PAC to, you know, affirm staff's report, given all the complexities and issues and emotions regarding the piece, to affirm the de-access, the accession that we had in February and to look into a plaque and to affirm the ongoing exploration of further documentation online to commemorate and recognize the ideas that Manfred Mueller has presented to us and to have that recognized, you know, in a very substantive way.
Anyone? Okay. So Mary Elizabeth has seconded. We have a motion on the table. If there's no other comment, it's a, it's difficult time, guys, so we'll call the roll.
I just have a quick comment. It might be out of place.
Please, no.
But.
Go ahead.
Just to add to the, the idea of the possible plaque, the artist said that his message wasn't understood completely, but he articulated it so clearly and so beautifully and maybe even he in the, in the virtual way, if he has a chance to explain it and be part of that presentation, that.
Yeah. Well, if I, if I may, can I amend even my motion to be clear about that? Yeah, that's what was my assumption. They put, I agree with you, Kathy. I believe that, you know, Manfred Mueller can present and put together documentation to present as a draft to be considered by, of all of his documentation, some of which he's already sent us, that he can, you know, write up how he feels he wants to commemorate his work, to present to Cultural Affairs, to appropriately put it up online.
And, and if I can add, this, this isn't part of the motion, it's just, you know, it, it's just for the clarification, should, should the Arts Commission affirm staff's recommendation, then the artist will have the opportunities, should he want, to repossess it and, and perhaps can find funding sources on his own or with the help of the various bodies that, that like Mary had mentioned and stuff like that, to put it somewhere else. He mentioned the Bay Area. So just because this city can't, if it's decided by this group that the city cannot take care of this in, in the way that would be safe and, and respect, and both respectful to the work, then it is not necessarily going to be destroyed. It would only be destroyed should the artist not take on the role of trying to find a next chapter for it. So I'll shut up. We have a motion and a second, so if there's no further, let's do it.
All right. Starting at the top, Michael Baroff?
Yes.
Eric Chalas? He's still with us?
Yes, Eric Chalas, yes.
Rosio Garcia?
Yes.
Janine Jackson?
Yes.
Michael Masucci?
Regrettably, yes.
Noted. Mary Elizabeth Michaels?
Yes.
Eva Sabermanian?
For the consideration, I think I'm going with a yes, but I, I have a, a reason for it, but I think I can talk about it later. Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay. Jeff Sweller?
Yes.
And Kathleen Zadikian?
Yes.
Unanimous.
So guys, not an easy one. I don't think any of us are happy by, you know, being on the winning side. There's no winning side on this one. But, um, but thank you for, you know, the, the hard work and consideration on this one. This was not an easy night. But it's not over. There is another, perhaps equally difficult conversation that we will keep shorter, that, that I'm going to move on to. I would just first, before I would hand this over to Shannon for backstory. There was instituted an, an ad hoc committee to investigate options and solicit community involvement for the City Hall murals. And we will be reinstituting that committee. Now Francois Bar, who's not here tonight, was on. committee. Now Francois Barr, who's not here tonight, was on that. Deepa was on that, and Michael Baroff were on that. If you want to continue to do so, you are more than welcome, but we are looking for additional volunteers to be on that committee. Anyone who's interested, simply email Shannon about your interest. But we will be reinstituting that ASAP, but I'm going to hand it over to Shannon for the history of this.
Thank you, Michael. So as some of the longer-term arts commissioners and PAC members might remember, the issue of the representation depicted in the City Hall mural came up a number of years ago. I think it was 2017, 2018. I think it had also come up prior to that. And we considered it. We were in the process of our City Hall, what was called at the time, the City Services Building percent-for-art project, which had started before this whole issue came up again. And so we kind of quickly pivoted. Mike Myers, the chair at the time, held a meeting with a variety of different community members and constituents to discuss the mural and how to approach it, and the Arts Commission made a decision in 2018. It was a five-point plan that I can share with you. One had to do with Lives That Bind that you have approved recently, like during the pandemic. All the other community engagement pieces around the City Hall mural were put on hold because of first, well, staff transition, and then the Belmar project, mostly the Belmar project, because it was high priority, very fast timeline. We couldn't do them both at the same time, and then the pandemic. And so as Belmar started wrapping up, we started revisiting the community engagement around the City Hall mural project. And as we were working on that, one of the new city council members, Councilmember De La Torra, had, who was part of the initial kind of protesting around this representation, brought this up as a potential item that he wanted to bring to city council. So I had a conversation with him and the city manager about what might be possible. Our plan was always to do the community and then any kind of recontextualization of the mural. But he put on the city council agenda to cover the mural before the community reconvenes in City Hall for a city council meeting, which is in mid-June. So this was put on the city council's agenda last Tuesday as a 13 item, which is an item that city council members can use to put things on the agenda. And it passed, and so we are now looking at some kind of translucent screen put over this, but we are starting our community engagement, we're restarting up our community engagement efforts as quickly as possible, given this, and hope to we had, sorry, we had had the subcommittee for the mural that Michael noted, and so we want to start re-engaging with that subcommittee. We also talked today with a consultant that could help us because we have such limited staff capacity. We need some help with this process. And so we're hoping tonight to be able to get some new people that are interested from the Arts Commission or the PAC to serve on this subcommittee to help guide this project. Janine?
I think I was on PAC at the time, and I volunteered to be on the committee. So now that I'm commissioner, I would like to be part of the committee.
That's great. That's great. And as we mentioned, if anybody needs to think about it, just simply email your interest to Shannon, and then, you know, there'll be some scheduling. But thank you, Janine. Well, with that, it's been a long, long special meeting. For the commissioners here, we still have to do a commission meeting. We will, I'll certainly trim some of the things, but I think we can move to close this special meeting, unless anybody has any final thoughts of this difficult process. All right, if nobody objects, I'm going to move to shut us down, and I thank you all. You know, volunteerism is often overlooked resource in a municipality, and you guys delivered above and beyond. It's often thankless, usually thankless, almost always thankless, but thank you. And until we meet again, for the PAC people, have a good night. The arts commissioners, we just take a minute break, and let's get our business taken care of. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
All right, so if no one objects, I'm just going to dive into this. I guess we need yet another roll call vote of which of the commissioners are here. Anybody?
All right, we'll call Michael Baroff.
Here.
Eric Chalas. Eric, are you still here?
He is muted.
There. Eric, are you still with us?
Yes, I am. I'm not sure why you guys weren't hearing me, but now I'm unmuted, yes.
Thank you, Ed.
Rosio Garcia?
Here.
Janine Jackson?
Here.
Michael Masucci?
I'm still here.
Mary Elizabeth Michaels?
Also still here.
Deepa Subramanian?
Yes, I'm here.
Jeff Swimmer? Okay. And Kathleen Zadikian?
Here.
Thank you all for sticking out. If there's no objection, I'm going to jump over the committee updates. If anyone wants at the very end, I can do very brief updates, but we have some voting to do about funding, which a lot of artists would be very happy if we took the time to consider. So with that, I'm going to jump to Shannon for her manager's report, and then on to the new business for the grants and fellowships that this city generously still gives to people. Shannon, are you still with us?
She is having some connection problem.
Well, Nathan.
She's back. Hold on, she's coming in.
Cool.
Shannon, you're unmuted.
Hi, Shannon. I don't know if you heard, but we're moving it over to your manager's report, and then we'll go on to new business.
We may have to come back to her.
Okay, if she's having tech problems. Nathan, judgment call. Would you like to push item six up to the front of the line, and we discuss the new business?
I'm fine with that. No problem.
Wait, I just.
Oh, hold on.
Sorry to interrupt, but she's coming in via phone call now, and she's ready to go.
Okay, so Nathan, you're out of here later. Okay, Shannon, if you can hear us, we're ready for you.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, so like, I totally froze in the middle of the conversation, Janine's question about the City Hall mural committee, so I have no idea what happened because my computer just completely crashed. So I'll get the update later. So are we on the manager's report right now?
That's correct, Shannon.
Okay, I'm going to cut through just to the essence. You know, there's a lot of art recovery stuff happening. Belmar History and Art is wrapping up, and we're ramping up with City Hall mural, as I was telling you about when we got cut off. The one thing that I wanted to make you aware of is that the city received a grant from Metro to do the Coast Close Streets Festival, which you might all remember, and we were able to adapt that grant due to COVID for the past year. So it's supported the K-Rails project on Main Street, but one of the exciting parts of what is supporting is an artist in residence on Ocean Avenue. Ocean Avenue has a new two-lane bike track on the western side, and there's a boardwalk with expanded outdoor dining, and it's really an opportunity to work with an artist to kind of re-conceptualize or envision with the community how this might be a different type of public space. We're not talking about closing the street to cars, but this is like one of the first times we were really trying to embed an artist into a city project that's centered around mobility. So it's a kind of cross-sector artist in residency to really do some prototyping and community engagement on what Ocean Avenue might look like as it evolves because of what's, you know, happened over the last year and what we've learned over the last year. So that's my hopefully very brief update.
Thank you so very much. So now we're going to quickly segue to the new business, and Nathan, I think this is your domain, am I correct?
Yes, hopefully. My light's a little strange here, but everybody can hear me? I was hoping to keep everybody here till midnight, but instead, I think I'll just jam through this really quickly, maybe. Since most of you have heard this before, you guys have approved the fellowship grants and the CAP, which stands for Community Access and Participation Grants, which are our organizational project grants, program grants, annually, and we're doing them all together here for efficiency and because of the way the timing worked out this year. This is the 12th year of the Artist Fellowship Program, which was designed to recognize and support creativity in the community by investing in Santa Monica's artists. This program was launched as one of the many things that were launched as part of the previous cultural affairs plan, Creative Capital, which dates back to 2007. So the first one was 2010, and this is the 12th year with the addition of this year's recommended artists. A cumulative total of 53 incredibly creative people will have received support representing the diverse visions, voices of Santa Monica's extensive professional artist community. The city's artist fellows have reported to us frequently that the program provides them with opportunities to concentrate on the development of new work, buy materials, hire assistants, rent space, focus public attention on their art, and otherwise invest in their creative careers. Just as a reminder, the fellowship is a two-tiered program. There are larger awards, which have been traditionally for us $20,000. This year, because of COVID cuts, they're $16,000. We hope sometime to get back up to the 20, but those are the large awards. There are two that are before you tonight. We do two of those annually, and there are nomination processes. So we have a group of nominators who nominate local artists, and then the panel reviews their work and selects two to recommend to you. Then the project fellowship grants are the other tier, which are $4,200 awards, and that's an application process. So any artist can simply submit an application. We have an online system, and it's a very streamlined application. They simply give a description of their project and their budget, and the panel, same panel, reviews those and awards three of those every year. There's, any discipline may apply for the $4,200 awards every year, but the larger artist fellowships have a rotating discipline. One year is visual arts, and then the next year we do all the rest, because it would seem there are many more visual artists in the community than the other disciplines, so we reserve one year just to do visual arts. This year marks the first year of a new component of the fellowship program, which is the Arts Commission-approved Kate Johnson Digital Arts Fellowship. I'm so thrilled to see this is now being implemented, and a really fabulous artist has been chosen for it. The two, let's see, that's the panel, which met on April 19, consisted of Nagin Singh, who many of you know, who is the Santa Monica Peer Executive Director. I guess we have to say she's the former peer executive director. The former LA Arts Commissioner and Executive Director of Self-Health Graphics, Tomas Benitez, a visual artist and writer, Max King-Cap, teacher, dramaturg producer, and former Getty Museum Performing Arts Specialist, Norman Frisch, and scholar, playwright, and fiction writer, Heather Dundas. They have reviewed all the materials submitted by the artists and have selected songwriter Frank and choreographer Jacob Jonas to recommend for the $16,000 Artist Fellowships. Two fabulous artists, and I may say, it's a great feature of this program. This is a great example of a legacy artist, Frank, whose career, she's been around, she's been singing songs around Santa Monica and around the country for 30 years, and has said that these funds will help her put her archive together online, which is a fantastic thing. And then Jacob Jonas, who's 28 years old, and who's just been, who's just recently come out of the box from Santa Monica and is having an international impact. So two very contrasting, wonderfully contrasting artists there. The project fellowships that are being recommended tonight are filmmaker Yul Case, whom I spoke to today, who has been making a documentary about the early years of of a writer, whose name will come to me in a moment, and Deborah Disman, who's a well-known visual artist who's been at the 18th Street Art Center for a few years. Multimedia artist Jody Zellen was selected to receive the first annual Kate Johnson Digital Arts Fellowship, and I think some of you know Jody. She's been a digital artist for years in Santa Monica. She's gotten previous fellowship, project fellowships for her digital work. Her digital work is represented at the LAX. She has a wonderful interactive work on a giant wall in one of the terminals in LAX. So what better person to get the first Kate Johnson Digital Arts Fellowship? So staff recommends that you approve the two $16,000 fellowships and the three $4,200 project fellowships, including the Kate Johnson Digital Arts Award, to the artists selected by the panel. Any questions?
Well, just, I just want to say something for about five, 10 seconds. As most of you know, if not all of you know, Kate Johnson was my life partner for 27 years, and I thank you very much. You're helping preserve the work that she did do and introduce her work to new people. Thank you for doing this, and thank you all for supporting. I don't think I need to recuse myself. I've thought about this a lot. But if the group feels that it's not appropriate for me to vote on this, I will totally honor that, but I don't truly believe there's any conflict because okay, thank you.
The writer that the filmmaker is working on is James Baldwin. He's doing a film about James Baldwin's early life and having some interesting conversations with the estate, which doesn't like certain things being brought to the fore about his life. So there's a really interesting controversy surrounding it already.
Any discussion? Because if not, I'm ready to move to approve the grantee recommendations with a resounding write-on.
Just a quick question, a quick question. The documentary on Baldwin, is there a particular connection between Baldwin and Santa Monica, or is this just a grant to a documentary filmmaker?
particular connection between Baldwin and Santa Monica? Or is this just a grant to a documentary filmmaker on any particular subject? Or as I say, a connection to Santa Monica?
The connection to Santa Monica is that the artist is a longtime resident of Santa Monica. This is, this is, and the the panel decided that it was a good project and an interesting proposal and an important subject. And that the artist had a great track record represented in order to do it. The the projects that are that are that are recommended are not always about Santa Monicas, you know, necessarily. The panel, the panel wants to wants to to give the most deserving artists and the most deserving projects, the the funds.
Very good. Thank you.
So I've I've moved to approve. Does anyone want a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. So I guess let's vote on giving some artists some money.
Best bar of the night.
Well, no, there's two other, there's two other things, but it'll be all all about giving money. So all good stuff from now on. So we'll need a, we'll need a roll call because it does involve money.
All right. Starting at the top, Michael Baroff.
Yes.
Eric Chalice.
Yes.
Rosio Garcia.
Yes.
Janine Jackson.
Yes.
Michael Masucci.
Yes.
Mary Elizabeth Michaels.
Yes.
Keep it Subramanian.
Yes.
Jeff Swimmer.
Jeff, are you still there?
Jeff got kicked off, so.
Okay.
Kathleen Zadikian.
Yes.
Here's.
Yay, thank you very much, commissioners. I will be contacting the artists tomorrow morning and everyone will be very excited, of course, thrilled. Jump to the next one? Michael, can you hear me?
He's muted. I say yes, go ahead.
Oh, you're muted, Michael. Hmm, uh oh, Michael may have lost contact.
As vice chair, I say go ahead.
Okay, great. Commissioners, the, the, oh, did we lose another person? I just want to make sure we have a quorum because then our work is wasted.
Right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I had just backed up for a second. Had Kathleen voted because I, she did. Okay, I'm so sorry. I I glitched out for a minute or two. Sorry. I'm back.
Do we still have a quorum? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The CAP, the Community Access and Participation Grants, which have been around since the 90s, have provided project support to our organizations, our arts and culture nonprofits. For a lot, for most of its time, the CAP program had three categories of grants and you could apply to two of the three. That's the way it had been worked out. And we had about oh, 23, between 20 and 25 organizations applying every year and we and we presented about the same number of 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 awards. The the grants were between 3,500 and 7,000. Now with the cuts, this program has taken the biggest cuts and there have been other pivots for the for the pandemic era as well, since it's impossible for organizations to do live events in the past year and so forth. So the 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 awards are now less than $3,000 each. And and we have three different categories than we used to have. Our categories now are readiness to reopen, community recovery and new virtual programming. These were things that were designed to help people think about what they could do with the funds during the pandemic year. That first category readiness to reopen is notable because it is it is, it is really administrative money, not project money. We decided to break off a piece of the actually, this is being done by public funders all over the US as a pivot for the pandemic era, which is to take some of the project funding, which normally would have gone to events and allow it to be used to sustain an organization through these terrible times. So but the and then we had, there used to be a category called Latino CAP, Latinx CAP. And what we've, what we've also created a new approach to this whereby any application can be in that category by simply checking a box in the hopes that we would get more and more flexible approach to the Latinx applications. And indeed, that seems to have been the case. We've got a record number of applications under that rubric this year. I'm going to move right along to that you received a list of the of the recommended grantees from the panel, which was which consisted of Deborah Padilla, who is the former Executive Director of the Social and Public Art Resource Center, otherwise known as SPARC. Dolores Chavez, who is the former director of the Rosenthal, the Rosenthal Theater at Inner City Arts. Natalie Marrero, Executive Director of Everybody Dance Now. A social practice artist Linda Pollak and producer playwright and teacher Rose Portillo. Also, Ojai Playwrights Conference Managing Director and former Music Center Education Division staffer Mark Seldis. It was kind of a stellar panel. And we're bringing to you a record number of 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 cap grants this year, 29. We've never gone beyond about 26. I think that was the 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 record, set another record last year. So the the program is becoming more and more competitive. We're getting more applications. And we're gonna and we're giving more up grants, but we're also declining more. So this is a program that is definitely heating up. I'm not going to read the whole list of of grantees, but I'll say that on your list, you'll find that all of them have been grantees in the past and that probably 90% of them have been frequent grantees. So there's no really new or there's no very new organizations in the pool. Staff recommends that you approve the 29 grants being recommended.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Same question. Given what you just said, that there's many applications and many of these grantees are recurrent grantees. Is there any you know, model for spreading the wealth, so to speak, or what 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 segregates, so to speak, the the ones who are consistently getting the grants, if that's what I heard you say?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily say the opposite, which is that there's a group that are consistently not getting the grants. I was just pointing out that that amongst the pool there are are folks who have been regular grantees.
Some of them, not all of them, some of them.
Well, that's right. I mean, we don't have a pool of people who normally get turned down, actually. But the panel, the panel was very assiduous. Actually, they worked very hard this year because there are so many applications and they understand that this is really tough times and these even these smaller grants matter a lot to people. So they looked very carefully at who was getting one grant and who was getting two grants. And they tried to adjudicate those situations to make sure that some organizations, which might have fallen off entirely, did in fact get one. So I'm very grateful to the panel for all that hard work.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Anyone want to make a motion?
Have a quorum.
Yeah, I can't tell. Okay. Anyone want to make a motion? No? Well, then then I will again. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Mary Elizabeth.
I make a motion that we make the grants as selected by staff.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Very good. So once again, let's go down the names. Well. Well, we can just say all.
Sorry, sorry, real quick. Who was the second? Who was the second on that?
Janine.
Janine. Okay. Great, thank you. All right, starting at the top, Michael Baroff.
Yes.
Eric Chalice.
Yes.
Rosio Garcia.
Yes.
Janine Jackson.
Yes.
Michael Masucci.
Yes.
Mary Elizabeth Michaels.
Yes.
Keep it Subramanian.
Yes.
Jeff Swimmer. Wait, was he, did he get kicked off?
Yeah, we may have lost him.
And Kathleen Zadikian.
I think she had to leave.
We still have a quorum. Here's.
So it once again passes. Thank you so much. So I think
Much appreciated, commissioners. It's very late.
Thank, thank you, man. This is a
This last item can go extremely quickly. Every year we bring a certain number of juror, new juror names of people to join a list of people who we can draw on for jurors. Technically, the commission has to approve the list. We've got 15 new names. The list has grown to about 750. So we've, we've got a lot of names, but if when there are new people that we meet and we want to consider for jurors, we have to bring them to you on a list every year for your approval. So that's what that is. And
So I'm not familiar. This is the first time I've seen something like this. Do the jurors eventually become decommission jurors? Because eventually we're going to have all of City of Santa Monica on this list.
Well, of course, it's regional, so it's actually more than just the City of Santa Monica. In fact, I want everybody on the list because it makes it much easier to put together really fantastic panels, which is which I, which I, which I liken to making a great dinner party. You want, there has to be a little dynamic. And so having a great list really is extremely helpful, a very diverse list and all that. So no, no, the only, the only way to get off this list is to move completely out of state or unfortunately, you know, to pass away, which has happened to a number of them as well. Not our fault.
Okay, thank you. And I wasn't aware that that was, I thought it was just only City of Santa Monica, but it's not. Okay.
No, it's not. But also, commissioners, if you ever think of people that you think should be on the jury list because they are knowledgeable about their about their subject and fair-minded and and so forth, then send those names to me or Shannon and we put them on the list for the annual approval.
So I certainly move we approve this, these additions to this group. Anybody want a second?
A second.
Mary Elizabeth seconds. This we can do by acclamations, if not money. All in favor? Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? One opposed? So, no, I'm sorry, Janine, yes or no?
Aye, aye.
Okay. Okay, sorry. Any abstentions? All right, you got some new names, Nathan.
Thanks so much for this paperwork, commissioners. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I know Shannon wanted to say one more thing before we close up this rather brief meeting we had today. So go for it.
Thank you, Michael. I just want to thank you all for your time tonight. This was much, much longer than anticipated. And I often, when I get the like, we get a timed city council agenda. And every time I get it from the person that gets it, I'm like, I admire your optimism. And I will tell you, we did a very optimistic timing of these meetings. So I just, I just really want to thank you for your participation. I know it was not a fun night in in the beginning. And these are hard decisions and I just, you know, appreciate you all. The other thing I wanted to note is you may have noticed that our Commissioner Angela Scott is no longer with us. And that is because she was appointed to the oh, gosh, Police Safety Advisory Committee of the City Commission, Police Oversight and Safety Commission, I think it's called, one of the acronyms. So she had to, by being appointed to that, had to resign from the Arts Commission. So that's why she's no longer with us and we'll be looking to fill her spot. And then the last thing
Real quick question. I don't seem to hear when we have openings. So is that, can you let us know when there's an official opening so we can let people know to apply?
Yes, and there, there is an official opening. So there's your notice. There may be more. I'm, I'm not sure. But the new appointments will be made at the end of June. So this is the time to encourage people to apply and we can follow up with a link to the application form.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And encourage you to encourage your folks to get people to apply to really round out this body. And then the last is, I just wanted to kind of note, because you've all been receiving emails from Manfred over the past.
Shannon, you're on mute.
Can hear you. She's gone.
Oh, sorry. I'm not gone. I'm here.
You're back, you're back.
I don't know. Oh, God, I can't wait to be in person again. I just wanted to note that you your decision about the flashing is the, there's no jurisdiction or role within this. I know he's been emailing city council. We do have in our policy protest or contesting the decision, which is, which would bring it to the staff level of the city manager and the director of the department. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. Very intentionally, the city council does not make decisions about public art. And that lies in the purview of the PAC and the Arts Commission. And and I think that, you know, with the City Hall mural, it got kind of fuzzy with Oscar making this motion and we need to kind of work out just ensuring that everyone's in the right lane and that your guys' you know, jurisdiction over these things is honored and respected. So just wanted to share that with you before we close.
I have a question. So Shannon, are you saying that technically his just this decision to cover the mural is going to come down or is going to be overturned? Or what are you saying about that?
I think with the covering of the mural, it's a little different because it's not a new artwork. It's a little gray. And I have a lot of questions that I'll be working through in the next couple of weeks to try and really suss out. But it is within the Arts Commission's jurisdiction for any public art dollars that are spent to remediate or recontextualize or anything like that, the the mural that's up there right now.
So with that, Shannon, do you have a sense approximately when the mural committee may convene with, within the next month or how much? What's your sense of it in your calendar?
I think it would be realistic that the we could reconvene the committee within the next month or two at the latest. But we are moving on this, especially given the the item that went before council. It made it a lot more urgent before, but you know, it was on hold for a while. So we want to get going on this.
And second calendar question, do you have a sense of when our next Arts Commission meeting will be, given this June timeframe of perhaps new appointments?
I mean, right now it's kind of quarterly, so we were thinking August because that might be the next time something might come before y'all for under your purview, but it may be before if things happen more, more quickly or sooner than that.
And and with that, let me jump in for a second. This may be my last time seeing you. I term out next month. I have served two full terms. I do have the option to apply for a third term. As of this moment, I have not done so. I am weighing a lot of options with this. But but if this is the last time, this has been a tremendous honor and privilege to work with you all and to to get to know you. And I'll be, I'll be making my decision in the next couple of weeks, but certainly officially, my term would be over before there is another Arts Commission meeting. If I, go ahead, go ahead, Michael.
No, I know it was on the agenda, but you kind of skipped over it. No, I, I, I know it was on the agenda, but you kind of skipped over it. Can you spend just a couple of minutes briefing us on the media subcommittee that you've been involved?
I would love to if you want to stay for five minutes. Okay.
I think it's, I think it's important for everyone to be aware of what's going on.
So, um, let, uh, I guess a little over a year ago, um, the Arts Commission, uh, approved a recommendation that I had to start something I've been wanting to do, uh, with this group since I first started eight years ago, which is to create, uh, a specific ad hoc committee that, that is dealing with, um, what I pretentiously call 21st century art, art that could not have been done 25 years ago. Art that, that is reliant on, um, the, the best collaborative talents of the engineering sector and the computing sector. And the body did approve it. Uh, so I convened a subcommittee. There are five commissioners on the commission, you know, Deepa, Michael, uh, Laurie, myself and, um, Kathleen. But there are a number of people that, um, have honored us with their presence. Um, one is a guy named David Reisner, who's an Oscar-winning and Emmy award-winning, uh, engineer. He invented the international world standard by which the, uh, industry, um, standardizes color in the digital spectrum. Diane People, who, uh, was the manager for the Virtual Reality Lab at USC. Joan Collins-Carry, who is a Chair Emeritus of Sigraff, which is basically the equivalent in, in the digital world to the American Bar Association or the American Medical Association. And Dr. Flavio Spersino, who's, um, an MIT Media Lab grad and the recipient of more patents as a student in the MIT Media Lab than anybody else. And she's been knighted by her home country of Italy. And, um, so, so we have a talent pool, um, at our disposal. And we've met three times, um, in the last three consecutive months and are currently, um, uh, soliciting from the group, um, some perhaps project proposals to bring to, uh, to you guys for consideration. Um, uh, if, if I am, uh, not a commissioner, uh, at the end of next month, I will still stay on as a non-commissioner member, um, at least during the transition, um, to make sure that the non-commissioner, um, participants, um, are, are fully acclimated. Because as Commissioner Baroff knows, um, they're not all totally used to, uh, the, uh, conflict of interest issues. So they still are basically learning the rules. And, um, but they're really smart people, so they'll learn fast. And I believe if given the opportunity, they will contribute significantly to, um, what, uh, Santa Monica does. And, and, and they're, they're all people who, um, are so used to collaboration and they, they're, they, they would love to work with you guys. So whatever happens, um, whether I see you again or, or not, thank you. And, uh, with that, I think, um, this short meeting, uh, probably is, is adjourned.
Well, we need to thank you, Michael, so much for your time and all of the valuable insight and experience and everything that you've brought. I hate that we're doing it on Zoom and not in person and, but thank you so much for being such a fantastic leader.
I appreciate the opportunity. All right, guys.
Okay, likewise.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you. Be well.
Night.